At every meeting, we open up the public comment section to items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you have something you'd like to talk about that is not on this agenda, you have three minutes to do so. You can either step up to the microphone or you can put your hand up if you're online. Do we have anybody sticking their hand up online?
We do not have any hands raised and we don't have any email public comment.
Okay, we'll close that public comment section tonight. And we'll go directly to our first hearing item. This is 106 Walnut Avenue. Design review application PL 22-0096 for a 2687 square foot, two level home over a 750 square foot garage utility room on an existing vacant lot at 106 Walnut Avenue. We heard this in a study session previously, but Mr. Boyle is going to tell us about it tonight.
Thank you, Lorraine. Thank you Chairman Chase and members of the planning commission and members of the public. Yes, this is a design review application for a brand new home on a vacant lot at 106 Walnut Avenue. And as Chairman Chase mentioned, this became, this came before the planning commission as a preliminary review in January of this year. And the commission and the public provided valuable comments that the applicant has taken and made revisions to their project. As I will talk about in a moment. So, okay. Project is located on the intersection of Walnut and Hickory Avenue, just north of Neal Coman School on a very unusual, narrow and steep lot. This is the, the full site plan and it's a little difficult to see, but I just wanted to show the entire lot itself. Very narrow in the front and then widening out somewhat at the base and the main part of the lot and then going very steeply uphill. The home is proposed at the, the lower section of the lot, pretty much as low as you could put it and not require any type of variance for front yard setback. Zooming in a little bit closer to the, the lower section of the site plan shows the, point to do we still know? No, it's okay. Can actually does that, is the mouse to that one being used? If I can borrow that mouse. Kind of, yeah, sort of anyhow. So we have the, we have the driveway at the lower right, 18% going up to the garage, a lower level garage, of course. And then above that, you have two stories of, of living space. To the right is the pathway up into the home. And to the right, the side setback varies somewhat because of a particular section of our code that requires increased side yard setback when homes, larger homes are placed on that side yard setback. And so the applicant has met those particular requirements and for both side yard, front and rear setbacks, floor ratio and lot coverage. And so no variances are being requested. Thanks. Site photos, obviously this is before installation of the story poles, but just gives you a sense of how steep and the site is. Proposed garage and entry level. In the center there, you have two cars as are inside the garage and then you have, those are the two required parking spaces. And then you have two extra parking spaces that could be used in the driveway. To the, behind the garage, you have some storage area and then you have a stairway lower left that takes you up into the first level through the garage. And you also have the ability to go up outside to the right of the driveway into the living area. The proposed first level is your, your great room and main living area. In, in addition to that, you have a bedroom and bathroom and pantry. And then another set of stairs that takes you, actually the same set of stairs here to the lower left takes you to the garage and then the stairs in the upper center takes you to the third level. Also in this plan, they have a light well feature here and second work, upper, upper left. And, and that provides an outdoor space as well as lighting area for that guest bedroom. Moving up to the, the, the second living area or third level overall. You have the primary suite to the right with an exterior deck taking advantages of the, the views to the east. And then you have two bedrooms and one bath back left and the backyard to the far left as well as a hallway and, and closets. That's your second level. Nothing has significantly has changed in the floor plan from the preliminary review that you saw in January. Just want to point out, we talked about the height of the building quite a bit the last time. Had the applicant provide this graphic which shows, you know, how we measure height and basically we measure height by taking the, the plane of the lot and, and so the, you know, the undulations and the various topography of a lot. We asked the applicant to, to put an imaginary line 30 feet above that line and then at no point can the home be greater than 30 feet. Zooming in, the applicant has provided this slide which shows the maximum height of the buildings. And so that's, that's the point at which the highest, the building is at its highest point and the ground is at its lowest point. And so that's what we're demonstrating there. And the home is 24, my notes on me right now. So here, I believe 24 feet. Sorry for jumping ahead. Just want to make sure I get the number right. Right below, where'd it go? There it is. 24 feet, 10 inches and the code allows up to 30, 30 feet in height. Jumping back. So those are, that's our, and then now going back into more general discussion of the elevations. So this is your front elevation, of course, showing the, the entire building as one would see it from the street. But doesn't, of course, articulate or show the, the progression of the building climbing up the hill. And the real, rear elevation, which will be really probably not seen by really anybody, is shown here. That upper level access to the deck and then to the lower left, you have the light well coming into the, the second level. South elevation is shown here. Again, pretty well cut into the hillside. And the applicant has added a parapet. You see a 30 inch parapet shown there and that is result of conversations they've had with one of the neighbors, the neighbor to the south. And a way to screen the mechanical equipment and the solar panels. The home is still way below the maximum height with that parapet. And that's, that's shown there. The parapet is shown on this image as well. And south elevation it just showed. Again, the north elevation showing the, the project climbing up the hills, showing the various materials that are being used. And in fact, at the end of the diastere, Chairman Chase is the extensive materials board of all the different textures and materials that are being used to break up the massing of the building and add interests in articulation. Including with that materials board is the exterior lighting specifications. And those are also in your staff report. Which are all dark sky compliant to minimize any, any extra lighting for the exterior. And this, the northeast view gives you a little bit, you know, better indication of how the building kind of climbs up the hillside, how it's articulated and the various levels in turn, including the, the deck above the garage as well as the deck on this third level or upper level. Southwest elevation, also wanted to point out that one of the comments in the preliminary review was an ask, a request of the applicant to soften the left retaining wall, just the left of the driveway, which is this here. And as you can see, they have put a ledge and a landscaping in that to, to soften and break up that relative large routine wall to the left of the driveway. Roof plan here shows the, the skylights and the location of the solar panels. And also, this is recently updated. This is different in your packet. But they recently provided the update of the, showing the parapet and that's the outline of the parapet area on the roof plan. Another request you all made was a landscape plan, which they've provided. Providing as much landscape as possible to, again, soften the building. Any articulation or, I'm sorry, any screening possible to, to minimize impacts to the neighbors, mainly to the north and, and to the south. Another specific request was to describe and show how they're going to deal with stormwater. And they have designed a detention tank that will go in the driveway, just in front of the garage. And shown here, and that's on the civil plan. Where water will be captured in that tank and then if overflows, it will overflow into the street. But just a way to, to catch and, and retain as much rainwater as possible. Terms of the, the project overview, like I said, no variances requested. Floor air ratio is 35% where the code allows 40. Lot coverage is 21. Code also allows up to 40%. And as I show there, it meets all the setbacks, front, both sides and, and the rear. And that the maximum height of the building again is, is, is just under 25 feet. Code allows 30 and the two parking spaces are being accommodated in the garage. And again, highlighting the, the items that you all requested. Landscaping, the retaining wall on the left, stormwater retention, landscape plan. I believe Chairman Chase asked for window specifications, which they've provided. In the particular windows they're going to be using in terms of their insulation value and their low E. And then also the HVAC system, system, they provided that that will be, have a height of approximately 24 inches. However, the screening will be 30 inches. So that should hide that. We've also shown them the requirements for noise level. That HVAC system must meet the town noise level requirements. And they did additional outreach to the neighbors since the prelim. In terms, here's the, this is the list of the extensive outreach they've done over the life of the project. About approximately 24 neighbors. And then this afternoon, I had the opportunity to visit 100, I'm sorry, 100 Walnut Avenue, which is just to the south shown here. And to give you all perspective and Donna from 100 Walnut is here in the room, but was able to go over her house and takes photos from her perspective. These are photos from the yard, front of her house. And you can see small red, red circle to the left is the view of the story pole. And, or the, or the orange mesh, I should say, of the story poles. Lower shot does not, there are no views of the story poles. And then moving down or moving up upstairs. So in the upper, this photo here, this is a bedroom, master, master suite and, and balcony. And so I took pictures from there. This from that one window here, red circle showing the view of, of the edge of the story pole and the mesh. And then this is from that exterior deck here. Shooting down with a, with a photo here and that's the small area of mesh that can be seen at that point. And with all of that, staff is able to make all of the findings for this designer review application and has provided a draft resolution with conditions of approval and recommends approval by the planning commission. And that concludes my report. I have the designer review findings here. If you want to discuss any of them in particular. And open to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Okay, it's time for the three of us to ask Mr. Boyle any questions before we have the applicant make their presentation. So, Mr. Rizzo, do you have any questions for these, for Mr. Boyle?
I don't think I have any questions for Phil today. I don't think I have any questions. I think they were answered last, last meeting. Thank you.
Margaret, do you have any things you want clarified? Would you turn your microphone on here, please?
So on page seven of the report. And I'm just trying to get some clarifications. That policy CD dash 2.2. It says allowing a maximum of two stories visible from every elevation. That's the last sentence there. So you don't consider the garage an elevation? It's on page seven. It's the policy CD 2.2, the last sentence of that opening paragraph. It's, it says, it's talking about the design guidelines. And it says that it's.
I see what you're saying. Yeah. Visual, visual bulk in residential development. Residential development may be decreased by stepping structures up and down hillsides, limiting the height and mass of the wall plane, allowing a maximum of two stories visible from every elevation.
I just need clarity.
And similar approach, yes.
So the garage is not elevation in, in this case?
Well, I think it's more addressing whether the garage is a story. And again, I think staff, a very good, good point. This is a guideline and, and our, you know, our code dictates height of buildings by, by height, not by, by number of stories. So that's, that's how we determine, you know, whether, whether it meets the requirements.
Well, we're not really talking about the requirements here.
Right, we're, we're talking about, you know, the, the particular, the, the guidelines which, you know, govern and encourage a way property should be developed, but not sort of hard and fast rule that it shall only be two stories. I hope, I don't know if that answers your question.
I'll just add that, you know, a general plan policy is, looks, kind of provides direction. It's a policy to, to achieve, but you don't necessarily have to meet every single, every single component of the policy. You're just trying to, to achieve the, the goals of that policy.
I understand that. I just needed clarity on what being talked about there.
So, yeah, so it would be three stories from the front elevation.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions for you, Phil. So, well, that said, it's time for the applicant to make their presentation if they would like to. Please.
Is your mic on, sir? Sorry.
Now.
Well, thank you.
Our objective was first to meet all the requirements, setbacks, heights, no variance, shade. And we met all of those. In addition, we took into account all the requests of the neighbors and the commission. And basically there were a few. We mitigated the massing of the structure. Massing of the structure was mitigated by multiple levels, each level divided up in multiple ways with decking, overhang. There's not one massive wall anywhere on the whole project. It's broken up with windows. It's broken up with material. We have three basic types of materials. It's called stucco, stone and, and wood. So the massing is broken up that way. Secondly, we tucked the building into the hillside to mitigate its presence as much as possible. On the left side, which I believe is the south side, you only see one story and most of it's even a partial story. On the right side, for the most part, you only see two stories as it steps up the hillside. From the rear, you see nothing. Some of the other issues that came up were the massing of the walls. We took the massing of the walls. If you look at the retaining wall, they divide into terraces. Two, three terraces, they're broken up. All the terraces have planting. Once the planting fulfills and grows in, you're going to see none of the retaining walls. Left side, on the left side, there's one issue with screening for visibility. We put a wood screen in there. And as you can see from the presentation that Phil gave, I don't think you see much of the house at all from the left side. From the right side, we also took away most of the windows. So from the right side, there's no windows looking onto the neighbor. There's one high transom window, which no one can even look out. Back neighbor, there was a couple of issues that brought up for the back neighbor. The house is 40 foot below the back neighbor. Additionally, the back part of the lot has been left in natural landscaping. We do a, a fence around the property which sort of duplicates and is similar to fencing around the neighborhood, which is wood wire structure. The wire structure basically disappears. So that's going to blend into the hillside. So the back of the hillside is left in a quite natural state. Planting, there's no high trees or anything put in the back part to block any type of views at all. Along the sides of the property, we did do some planting to soften and blend into the hillside. So if you look how the houses stepped back into hillside and what's difficult, it slopes both front to back and side to side and it's a 40% slope. And so we tucked the whole house into that and it does outline the hillside as much as possible. And I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. I was expecting you to tell us more. Anybody else from the applicant team here to say anything? Nope. Okay, we will do that. We will ask questions. So I'll turn to the other commissioners here. If you guys have any questions, I'll start with you, Jim.
First of all, I thought I was losing my mind when the parapet came up and it wasn't on the drawings because I didn't, I didn't think. Thought I missed something. Usually you don't miss things on drawings, but could you tell me what the parapet material is? Thank you.
First, one, the issue came up about some of the neighbors didn't want solar panel. Well, Corder Madera requires solar panel. Then the issue came up about a parapet. Corder Madera doesn't require parapets, but we're putting one in anyway. So we're doing a 30 inch metal parapet. We're doing a metal because less bulk. And then we're going to paint it to match the stucco color. So it'll blend away. And it will outline the perimeter of the solar panels.
And it's step back. You probably wouldn't even see that from the street.
Yeah, it's step back on the sides and we outlined it. That just came up because meeting another neighbor's request.
And another design question, the, the Hardy panel. You anticipate having a certain pattern on the facade? Is it going to be a bond or a stack or? How are you going to stack the panels? Are they going to be? Have you talked about that yet?
Not in too much detail. Basically what we're going to do is a, a straight line, clean as possible. No, we're not going to make it look like stone or anything. It's going to look like when you do a, a stucco wall, sometimes you have to have an expansion joint, a straight line going like a window. That's how it's going to be.
More of a stack. Okay. That, that's all, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Margaret?
Um, I, I have a question about that water tank or whatever. So that's going to capture rainwater. Is that right?
Correct.
And so is there any plan to capture the water coming out of the hillside?
How the water is going to fall, if you look at the plan itself, you're going to see it's like, let's, let's call it a U-shaped retaining wall. It goes around the property. At the bottom of all those retaining walls on the exterior is what's called a perforated PVC pipe. It's like a pipe with holes in it. So all the water is going to come down the hill, hit the retaining wall, go into the pipe and they get circled around and being brought back into that retaining pit, which is in the driveway. So it's all collected.
Okay, so I, I live on the hillside and in my retaining wall and the house is very old. There's, there's a pipe, literally a pipe coming out of the hillside in a couple of different places where long ago they somehow drilled into the hillside and now water pours out of it when it's raining. So how is your hillside going to react?
Well, you're, you're probably describing what they call daylight. Way back when people took the water and put it out of the hillside, they called it daylight and let it go. How this is, all the pipes are connected now together sort of around that, that U I'm talking about. And then they're all brought back around into that retaining tank. So nothing is daylighted out. That, I, if that answered your question. So you, I would assume back when your house was built, they didn't require this. Just got, when your house was built, I'm sure they didn't require this. They took it away from the house and daylighted it out and just let it run the street. Now it has to all go into a tank.
Yeah, of course.
Um, are you guys going to use that as cistern for, for the irrigation?
Good question.
That could run most of the.
That, that is a good question because we would like to do that. And I don't know your, all your code requirements. In fact, there was an environmental woman here last time. And she was promoting it to you. And we were going to, in fact, I had a brief conversation on the way out because that is, we would like to look into that. But I don't believe that you guys have any ordinances or requirements for that, which is something good to have. I don't know if recall, she was here the last time. She was promoting it also.
Required. I was just asking it, it just seemed like.
And that especially nowadays, no, no.
Year round too. Yes, it's curious. I agree. Way to get the water.
Yeah, it's a technical challenge. Otherwise this water is going to just be collected so it doesn't dump on the street and then it's going into the sanitary sewer. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I think that's now the way it's supposed to happen in Corder Madera.
Correct.
Has to get into the sanitary sewer. So it never sees the light of day. So to speak. Right. I hope. The problem is that sanitary district needs to charge more money for all this water they're running through their system. That's another story. Um, okay. Any other questions from you guys about this? All right. I just have one question about it. Jim asked about the metal screen up there. Is that perforated to allow airflow through it or is it just solid, the metal screen up?
Yeah, we.
Yeah.
It, it's usually a ball of metal, about three quarter inch thick. And then depending on how the, the water goes around it, you either have it up from the roof or we put sort of like repoles around it so the water, water goes out and it drains naturally off the roof. And we've used, carpets can be done metal or they can do stucco. The metal ones just are less bulky and they're cleaner. And then you paint it to match the house, though it's a lighter looking structure and it blends better, we think, than a stucco would.
Right. They last longer. Right.
Oh, I do have one.
Okay, Margaret, yeah, have at it.
What do you see as the timeline for completing this project?
Ah, the contractors here. I don't want to put words. I hate putting words in a contractor's mouth. If I say a year, is that, am I putting that in your mouth? Okay. That's too short. Okay.
12 months.
Well, no, he, he said it's too short. 14 to 16 months. However, also when you're building, the most when you're building, the most disturbing for the neighbors, obviously in the beginning part. All the finished work, the painting and all the other good stuff that goes into it, that happens internally, so it's not bothering the neighbors. That's always a concern that we deal with all the time. We explain the noisy, messy stuff is at, at the beginning. And the last six months is all the internal stuff. First of all, you want to obviously button up the exterior of the building first before you do any of the internal.
So it'd be about eight months of neighborhood activity, and then the last part of it would be indoor, so to speak.
Yeah, all the internal, right.
Okay, all right. I'm very satisfied with the proposal, so I understand it and I don't have any questions, so. All right, at this moment, then we'll open it up to public comment. I believe there may be somebody here to comment on the project. Is that possible? So we have three minutes if you have a comment on this project. If so, please step up to the microphone. If not, I'll check with Lorena to see if she has anybody online.
Yes, it looks like we have a hand raised from Keith Nedson. I'll go ahead and move him over.
Good evening, everybody. Am I on?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you and happy belated holidays. So hopefully I'll keep this quick. I was actually up the over Easter weekend visiting my mom, who, who by the way turned ninety-seven on Thursday. And had the opportunity to, to check out the story poles and, and you know, walk the property. And you know, as we've discussed here today, in my estimation, given the heights and the story poles as they are, I don't expect the existing structure to, to impair my mom's views. However, having said that, I did have a couple of other questions. One is the, the far rear retained walls. When I looked at one of the schematics, it looks like those things are coming up another eight to ten feet above the actual ground surface. So I don't know if that's a counter for in the height. I'm not sure kind of what those will end up looking like, but um, the other question I had was, as noted in our last meeting, I was concerned about the solar panels and, and any reflection or whatever else that might come back up the hill or direction depending upon where the sun is. And looking to the, the package here, although there's notations about their efforts to mitigate it, I could not locate specifically what was being done in the package or in the, in the process to mitigate potential solar impact from the reflection coming back. That's one question. The other question is, I spoke to Phil earlier today. Understanding that, you know, given that they're maxing out their far requirements on the lot, um, and they're going to be, you know, leaving the upper, upper side of it relatively open as for the wild left corridor and for animals and whatnot. So my two questions are, that given this existing approval we're looking at, is there anything within this approval that would preclude them from, from building another structure up the hill, for that matter? Um, or you know, or just moving further up there that, it, it with a potential issue that could be impairing my mom's views. And I don't know the answer to that, but I just want to throw it out there for purposes of conversation and, and for thought of, you know, the builders and whatnot. Um, and the other thing that I found kind of confusing, if I look at on page two of the package, the ordinance requirement for rear setback is twenty-five foot minimum. Then to the right, it says applicant's proposal is ninety-four to a hundred and ten feet. But then yet, further in the documentation, they talk, they, they note a forty foot setback. So I'm a bit confused as to is it, is it a hundred and ten? Is it ninety-four? Is it forty? When I did look at the property in person, it seemed like it was a lot more than a forty feet. But again, there's discrepancies in what the actual footage and the setbacks are as per what the, the proposal is requiring. And most importantly, you know, as I mentioned, what is stated in the existing standards table. So that was kind of concerning again, but um, I think we're all trying to do the right thing here for the right reasons. So I just felt it was appropriate to throw these questions out there and and be optimistic that, you know, I know they're trying to do the right thing and I, and I respect that. And so that was kind of, those are my questions or concerns. I guess the other thing I'll mention, but not, just for purposes of conversation. When they talked about the construction of eight months on the front end and fourteen to sixteen months for the entire project, did I read in the package correctly that Cordera allows for construction Monday through Friday and Saturday and Sunday?
I'm sorry, say that again and then we'll cut you off because your time's up.
All right, yeah, well, the last question was, if I read through the package properly, it would appear that the city of Cordera allows for construction to go on Monday through Friday from seven to five or something. But in addition, it allows Saturday and Sunday construction, which is somewhat unusual. And I guess by bringing that up, I'm wondering if we're going to have eight months of seven days a week, you know, noise and disruption, or is it going to be broken up a bit anyway?
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
You will get that opportunity. Thank you. Rena, do you have anyone else?
Uh, we don't have anyone else with a hand raised, but we did have a comment that was emailed to you all earlier and Phil stated we would read it into the record and this is from Michael Wang. Um, so the comment states, hello, Mr. Boyle, we are writing in support of the new project proposed at one oh six Walnut Avenue. My wife and I reside at one zero eight Walnut Avenue and have been residents here since nineteen ninety-eight. We are both practicing architects and feel that this new project would be an attractive addition to the neighborhood. Oddly, although the address of this project is one zero six and we live at one zero eight Walnut, the subject property has two residences between us. Someone must have the address back in the fifties. The owners of the property shared their design early with us to solicit comments and we had no issue with the siding, massing or use of materials. We hope that their project can be swiftly approved so that they can be under construction this year. Feel free to contact me should you have any questions. And they just provided their information and that was the last comment that we received.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Bill, uh, for you, would you care to just comment on the actual FAR of the project and those setback issues that they brought up?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, um, the, the questions I had written down from, from the gentleman were one, solar impacts. There are no specific requirements in our code, or I believe even the state of California dictating one shall minimize glare from solar panels on a home. That's going to, that glare is going to vary based on time of year, based on weather and based on orientation of the solar panels. Additional structure, I did talk to the caller earlier today. Um, the setbacks, as I've stated, maybe I'll answer both those questions. So the, the rear yard setback per the code is a minimum of twenty-five feet. And the proposed setback for this building because of the back of the lot is at a, at a slant. If you measure at one point from the back of this building to the rear property line, it's ninety-four feet away. You measure from another point of the back of the building to the back property line, it's a hundred and ten feet away. It's because the rear property line does this, it's not, it's not straight. Um, I can show you that on a picture if you like. Um, so the, the project is way within the requirements of the code in terms of rear setbacks. Um, if they choose to construct another structure um, in that backyard, they will need to abide by setback requirements, lock coverage requirements and floor ratio requirements depending upon what they're proposing. So it's, it's certainly possible to, to build something there. Um, but it all depends on, you know, what they build, how big, how large it is and the process that would, it would go through for, for planning review. So I hope that answers that question. Um, and again, they are pretty close to you know, their lock coverage. They've, they've got a ways to go. They're at twenty-one percent, maximum is forty. For a ratio, they only have five percent to, to play with. They're at thirty-five, maximum is forty. Construction hours, the caller is correct. Those are, those are the construction hours that are standard for the town of Corder Madera. Um, printed in the resolution. And as the applicant mentioned, you know, they, they have an estimated time of, of when, how long this project will take. There have been other projects where a commission modified those construction hours due to concerns from the neighbors or concerns of some sort. I think that addresses all the questions the caller asked.
Uh, the retaining heights at the rear of the house. I don't know if that's something you want to take a stab at, or if you'd like to have the applicant address that.
Retain walls at, at the rear of the house are, are pretty much tucked into the, you know, in, into the, the building is right there. The more visible retain walls, as I talked about earlier, as these Commissioner Rizzo mentioned, were left and right of the driveway. And those have been, those meet the, the height requirements and those are being, as I pointed out, screened or softened with landscaping.
Okay, so those retaining walls at the rear basically come up to grade at the back of the house, is that right?
Yes, have to really take a close look at the, at the at the section. Yes. Yeah, I think sheet, sheet A three one. So there's a section of some of those, of those retained walls.
Doesn't show the natural grade relative to that, but, right. I'll ask the applicant the question here in a moment, so, okay. Okay. Who would like to answer some questions? Okay, so step up, please. So at the back of the property is illustrated on A three point one are the retaining walls at the back of the property there.
They're basically aligned with the grade.
Yeah.
The best way to see that is if you look at A two point one and A two point two, those are the side elevations and you can see it in the back. And obviously the grade looks from front to back and side to side, but the way the retaining walls are sitting to the hillside is they step back to be basically level with grade as you go up. So if you're in the back of the lot and you're looking down, you're not going to see the retaining walls. As you look at A two two, there's nothing seen at all. And then if you look at A two one, you see in the background, there's like a gray line, a little gray area there. That's the grade and you, you could see that the retaining walls there. They're right at grade.
Just out of curiosity, when I look at the survey of the property and it looks like the existing grade down at Walnut Avenue is about one oh seven, something one oh eight, something like that. Top of the property, it looks like it's one seventy-eight. So that is essentially a seventy-foot high lot.
Okay.
Yeah, so and your building height is forty foot. So that leaves essentially thirty feet of elevation from the highest point of the house to the top of the lot. That's a significant.
I'm, I'm going to use Phil's analogy. The best analogy is he could explain it better than I can, the potato chip analogy. Everywhere you walk on this lot, front to back and side to side, one looks at the height of something based upon the grade up. If you're looking at the plan of the house, the best way to explain it is if the left backhand corner, the retaining wall and the roof of the house are almost equal. In fact, in fact, because about three foot difference that, that the house is even lower than retaining wall because the house is basically below grade. The left-hand corner is below grade, it's nothing. Right-hand corner, as the, as the grade slopes down, you will see some of the retaining wall. However, it's also terraced back. With a confusing helmet in is, you're not looking at from front to back anymore. Look at front to back and side to side. Left-hand corner, the house is literally below grade. Right-hand corner in the rear, you're going to see some of it, but it's only going to be terraced up. And I believe that the retaining wall, the it's twelve inches above grade. I mean, just, it's going right at grade and then it's terraced down to that. How? If that explains it a little bit better?
Um, for, yes, the average concept of how the grade relates to the house, yes. Um, my uh, purpose in bringing that up was that, well, actually, that there's another thirty feet above the house that this house is below to the neighbor's lot up above you.
Oh yeah, I think it's forty feet in fact. That's where the neighbor got the forty feet from. The forty feet that he said the setback wasn't the setback requirement, the forty feet was the difference from the back of the house to his lot. That was the forty feet.
There's just no way that there's any imprintment on view or anything up there.
No.
Okay. Do you guys have anything else that you wanted to respond to in those, those questions? All right. All right, thank you. All right. Commissioners, anything else you want to ask anybody? Before we close it all up and discuss this? No, Margaret? Okay, thank you.
Cameron Chase, I just wondered, did you close the?
I'm just about to say, I'm going to close the public comment.
I just want to make sure. And if, if anyone else wanted to speak.
No, I think we're done here, so we're closing. To make a public comment? You do, okay, so we, you didn't hear my call, so we'll let that reopen and yeah, there you go.
I have to do this. I just wanted to ask, are you going to be working seven days a week? No? Okay. Okay.
All right, thank you. Just bad for sanity. Okay. We'll close the public comment section of this. All right, thank you. So let's take this under discussion. Jim, I'll start with you.
Sure. Covered most of my, my concerns in the first meeting and I, I thought that applicants did a great job of, of addressing some of my concerns. I think it was that large retaining wall that they stepped, stepped back and landscaped. And a very good job working with the neighbors and some of the privacy concerns with some of the lattice work. I'm calling it lattice, call whatever you want. Working with the, the parapet and, and there's nothing we can really do about the solar panel glare unfortunately, but is what it is. And, and there was another glare comment, I believe, from another neighbor in, on Elm. And I believe the material we're using for the roof is a modified bitchman. It'll be a gray material, so it won't be very reflective, which was a concern. So that's great. So I, I think, oh, I really liked the design. I did a great job. I, I don't know if a different style of building would have worked on this lot. I appreciate some of the, some of the sustainable materials that, that we're going to be using and I hope they can work out that cistern. That's kind of a fun idea. I know that's going to be running almost year round with a hill like that. And so I think we can make all the findings to approve.
Okay, good, thank you. Margaret, your commentary, your thoughts?
I was there originally and then I was there this past weekend and I just sat and watched people walk by. And the first thing that everybody does is look up. Because it's, it's going to be tall. And although I think it's a beautiful design, and I think that it is an impossible situation to work with. I think that it's not really, the design is not really compatible with the neighborhood. It's not what that neighborhood looks like. Um, and so I don't really agree with the conclusion that the staff report drew. I don't think it is compatible with the neighborhood. I think it's beautiful for that lot. The thing that I appreciate about it is the way it stepped back into the hillside. What I don't appreciate about that is that I think the white and the light sort of. and the light sort of jumps back out at you as opposed to the wood and the darker colors which kind of recede. And I'm just wondering if that lighter color can be just toned down a little, so it isn't quite looming over you as you, as you walk by, because that really is the first thing that people look at. And, um, and the sidewalk there is kind of iffy, so I hope you're planning to do something with the sidewalk as it just sort of veers away from the house. I did also notice that the house across the street is for sale. I don't know if that makes any difference to anybody or if it's already sold in one day. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Um, uh, I think to start out, I could make all the findings for this, uh, project, um. I think it's the best, uh, use of the verticality that's there. It, um, recedes as best you can hide square footage into a hillside and the vertical component does that. Um, I don't mind the temporary nature of it, um, we're seeing a lot of that, I think it's sort of a trend, it's what's happening in Corder Madera, it's a new time for architecture, um, so I think it's, it's good that it sets the standard and more people are building with contemporary structure happening, that's what's going on. Um, and it's a good use of materials, so, um, uh, I would, um, ask for a motion one way or the other from the other commissioners here.
Can you break one?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
You're looking at.
So, just.
I'm hearing your, your temperature.
Just to chime in, um, only, there only needs to be two yes votes for the item to pass.
Well. Okay. So, do you want me to do that?
Sure. Oh, I, I.
I, I just don't see where the resolution is.
And a motion approved.
Um, it is, uh, behind the staff report there. Um, so, page, uh, ten essentially goes through the staff report and then. There you go, uh, you're at the back of this, the resolution right there, so keep turning toward the front, toward the front. Go on. Couple more.
I have my own.
There you go.
Okay. So, um, I make a motion that the Planning Commission approve uh, the matter of the major design review application for a two thousand six hundred eighty-seven square feet two-level home above a seven hundred fifty-six square foot garage utility room on the existing vacant lot at one oh six Walnut Avenue. File number PL two-two dash zero zero nine six.
For the record, that is, uh, resolution number twenty-three dash zero one zero. That's a PL, right, so the resolution, right, so, are you going to second that, Greg?
Second.
All right. Let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Bandell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Yes.
Chair Chase?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush, Bush Sawyer is absent and Commissioner Kenny also absent, motion carries.
Get your building permit and go to town.
And before we leave, I'll, I'll read the appeal rights.
Yes.
Um, following action by the planning commission at a public hearing. Any decision by the commission may be appealed to the town council within ten calendar days. Appeal forms are available, um, in the community development department for town of Corder Madera, and there's a three hundred dollar fighting fee.
All right, thank you, Bill, for all your effort here, uh, congratulations. For, all right. Okay, so next on tonight's agenda uh, is a business item. Um, this is the town park restrooms.
Oh.
This is discussion and possible approval of resolution number twenty-three zero zero nine, recommending town council approval of the town park restroom project. So, um, we have with us tonight online, um, RJ Tuko, and we have in the room, uh, Parks and Recreation Director Tim Berry. So, uh, who's going to start this out, uh, Mr. Boyle or Tim or RJ?
Uh, I am Chairman Chase, we have, I have a short PowerPoint presentation and then, um, perhaps additional comments from Tim and or RJ. And we'll bring that PowerPoint presentation up. Thank you, Lorraine. There it is, um, so yes, this is, um, this is a town project, um, being brought before the planning commission by the town of Corder Madera to build an additional town park restroom in Corder Madera Town Park. Proposed location is, on your left is, uh, aerial view of the parking lot, which is north of the community center and also north of, um, Cafe Verde. Um, and that white rectangle, white square to the left is the approximate location of the proposed new restroom. On the right is a photograph of the mock-up that Public Works and Parks and Recreation, um, put out to show the cones, show the outline of the building and then, uh, that storyboard, um, shows many of the images that you'll see tonight of, um, of what the building itself will look like, its floor plan and exterior materials. So this is the proposed location and I'll go into sort of how this location was chosen in a bit. First, I'll just talk a little bit more detail about the, um, the building itself. Um, this is the front and side rendering of the building, um, I do want to get credit and thank you to, um, Rich Pearlstein. Um, he provided of, of Pearl, Polski Pearlstein Architects of Luxper provided, um, um, a good amount of volunteer, volunteer time, working through some of the extra details, colors and, um, RJ or Tim may have more to add to that, but thank you to, to Rich for his work. Um, so this is the front and, and side rendering. Um, this is the front elevation looking straight on, um, not, it is interesting, but you can see, of course, the details and, and some of the components of the restroom, uh, this elevation in particular, you know, two entryways and then exterior water fountains, exterior, um, out, um, water for pets and exterior hand washing, um, facilities as well. Uh, this is the side elevation, um, again, showing just, just the basic location of the doors and, and how the roof, the roof line and, um, the various lap siding and then the stones, stone wainscoting down below. Um, the building basically has, um, four different restrooms. You have, um, a men's, a men's room in the upper, uh, women's room, uh, lower left, and then you have all gender or, you know, family, single stall um, rooms, uh, upper right and lower right. And then through the middle, you have a utility chase and, and a storage area, um, for maintenance. And so that's the basic, basic layout of the, um, of the restroom facility itself. Uh, colors and materials, um, again, this giving, uh, a little more detail of what the exact colors are uh, the manufacturers, uh, of the, both the roofing, uh, the trim and the columns, the trusses and, um, and also the siding and also there'll be tile, uh, we should have pointed out that with the elevation, I'll show it again, the tile um, at the, the water features that are on the exterior of the home, I'm sorry, exterior of, of the restroom. And then the stones, um, the stone wainscoting. Okay, I'll, I'll go back just to give you a, a better view of that, oops. There you can see that the various materials, um, the tile at the drinking fountains and then the, a stone wainscoting around the entire building and then the lap siding and standing scene metal roof. That's that, and then, um, just wanted to quickly mention for those of you who weren't here back in October of two thousand twenty, we adopted, uh, um, the town project report process. Haven't done one of these in a while, the last one we did was for, um, park signs. And then before that, we did that for, for the town hall itself. And this is basically a, a process that the council that came before you and then went before the town council again, roughly three years ago, um, where a town project is, um, the town project report is prepared and that is reviewed and looked at by, back then we said the planning director, now the community development director, and at that point, depending upon the scope of the project, um, prior, after the plant, the community development director reviews it, it goes to either the planning commission or the town manager. Um, and this particular project's going to the planning commission for a recommendation. And then, uh, the actual decision will be made by the town council, um, when they see this project and, uh, and the money will be, you know, allocated as well. So that's just an overview of, of how this project is different than if a private applicant was coming in, developing something. Um, the planning process that's taken place to date, um, way back in, in, and in the two thousand, when, when the priorities were set for the two thousand twenty-two annual work plan, the town council identified public restrooms in town park is a very high priority. There is significant public support for new restrooms in town park through the master plan process, which is ongoing. Um, there's been many, many comments and requests for additional restrooms. There was a community workshop held, um, by the parks department, uh, back in October of two thousand twenty-two. And then a meeting before the, the Parks and Rec met again and got an overview and a summary of the community workshop. They, that happened back in November of two thousand twenty-two. And then in January this year, Parks and Recreation Commission unanimously directed staff to bring, uh, this design, the location and the hours of operation to the planning commission for your review and hopeful, hope, um, forward a recommendation to the town council and that's the next step. And then that, uh, once it goes to the town council, they will make the final decision. So that's the overview of the planning process that's taken place and that will take place. And, um, I don't know if I have any, um, anything RJ or Tim would like to add. Um, but that's more or less concludes my presentation.
Yeah, I'm happy to add a few comments here, um, thank you. Yeah. Um, Chair Chase and planning commissioners for having us tonight. Um, just wanted to, to speak a little bit about the engagement, um, that occurred, um, there was the community workshop and then there were several, um, discussions with the Parks and Rec Commission. And, um, you know, we did talk about, you know, the difference in layout types, you know, whether it was kind of your traditional male, female with individual, um, with, um, integrated stalls or what we're calling, what we ended up with the hybrid approach or the just single units and more than them, so that really led us to this, um, hybrid option. Um, we also, prior to that, spent a lot of time talking about location and we had previously identified, um, eight potential spots, there was a lot of feedback as part of the Parks and Rec master plan about, you know, should it be closer to Park Madera Center, should it be closer to playground and really, um, the feedback was for it to be um, in this location, you know, near, near the eastern parking lot because it's very central. Um, the, the location that is, um, kind of underserved in the park was tended to be the, the eastern end, as you can imagine, because the existing restrooms are on the west end of, of the park, um. And so that kind of came through as we had those dialogues that that was the, the best spot for it. And, um, as part of that, we also analyzed, um, feasibility of, you know, utilities and, um, the various costs and also, um, you know, how to make it compliant, you know, if you put something, um, far enough away, you know, we got to make sure we have, um, pathways that are compliant to get there, we got to make sure it's feasible to run the utilities, all those things, so those are all really kind of baked into this decision and, um, we're comfortable with, um, where we've ended up, um, thus far. And then again, also wanted to just thank again, um, Richard Pearlstein for, um, volunteering his time, um, for the last several months, um, really just kind of dialing in um, the exterior aesthetics, um, we had some, some good ideas, but, um, we're struggling kind of which ones to go with, given historically we've had some vandalism here at town park at our restrooms and trying to kind of build something that was both, um, you know, aesthetically pleasing, but also, um, was something that we could maintain over time. And so we kind of did move away from, um, at one point we had some natural cedar, um, panels and accents and, and decided to go with, um, some similar earth tone colors, um, but something that in a scenario we get graffiti or whatnot, um, we can, um, you know, relatively easily, um, paint over it or, or, you know, um, handle it, but we'll still do, you know, anti-graffiti coating and, and other things to, um, mitigate those, but, um, knowing that worst case we can paint over was, was a nice, um, step, so. Um, but otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, RJ. Uh, Tim, would you like to add something to this before we ask all three of you any questions?
Sure, the only thing I'll say is that we, um, had our annual Easter hunt this past Saturday and there's quite a bit of buzz about the new restroom coming in, people are excited, um, they like the location, um, they're very, and they all looked at the storyboard and where it's going to be, so there's definitely buzz about the project in the community, which is always good to see, so, um, we're looking forward to it.
Okay. All right, um, so I'm going to turn to the other commissioners here and ask if you have any questions for any one of those three people. That would be Phil, Tim or RJ. Margaret, do you have any questions?
I do.
Good.
So, my first question is about this picture. Is the, the, the gray sort of porch area, I'm going to call it a porch. Is that solid across or is it like a tray with a lip? Uh, what is that?
I'm happy to take that one, I, I think, um, yeah, the intent is not to have a step, I think that's what you're asking.
A what?
It, there, there's not intended to be a step on this porch, it's intended for the paths to be flush.
Okay, that was my next question, is it wheelchair access?
Right, um, so yeah, no, it, it'll all be ADA accessible, um, to all parts of the restroom, not just, say, you know, an individual stall, or you know, an individual, um, you know, one of the, the ones you can lock behind and kind of use by yourself, it's, you know, you'll ADA compliant for the men's, women's and then also, um, those individual, um, units, uh, but everything will be at grade, uh, we did consider raising it, um, a foot or two to get out of the flood plain, um, but really we thought it was going to be a little awkward, um, being several feet up from the otherwise flat town park. And, um, we did instead, um, put in these, uh, floodproofing measures and, um, uh, Richard Pearlstein had it, had an, um, really cool idea that I hadn't seen is, you know, kind of these, from the outside they look flush. Um, so you don't have this kind of great event, but as you get, um, any floodwaters on the outside, it actually will push open and kind of rotate in, so, um, that was a nice addition that he made.
And my other question is about, um, just safety and lighting and cameras or, um, it's concerning to me, but what might go on?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer the security and I think maybe then I can tag team the other, um, we did at our October workshop discuss whether the community was okay with cameras. And a little bit surprising that everyone was, um, the majority and actually don't recall anyone saying no or in favor of them, they thought it was, you know, kind of normal this day and age and thought it was a great way to, um, curb vandalism. Curb vandalism and so. We're still working on kind of the specifics on that, but. We have kind of landed on a system that will be serving our town hall project and it's likely we might. Go with a similar platform for this, but. And then as far as lights, yes, I. Believe there's some down lighting, but I don't have that specifics off the top of my head. Tim, are you able to talk about powers? I know that was, I think, in one of the discussions with the Parks and Rec Commission?
I can just before we hand over to Tim, I can just add in in the staff report, I mentioned that there is exterior lighting that's dark sky compliant above. Each of the doors for each of the facilities. And and also mentioning that there is, the building will be wired for those for those exterior cameras.
Those are my concerns.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rizzo.
Yes, I've got a few questions. How long? How much time we have on the grant to finalize the design and start construction?
Yeah, I I don't believe that. The there's a hard and fast grant deadline. And thanks for bringing that up. There there is. We were able to tap into some grant funds to to fund. Maybe two thirds of the projects, which is great. But as terms of schedule in general, we would, you know, if this. Gain support from planning commission, we would take this to town council. Potentially in May, if they green light us, then we would place the order to begin fabrication on this. This unit, it's a modular unit, it's constructed off site. The facility, I believe, is in the Reno area. As you see, just by looking at this image, you notice two posts kind of at the. Where the pitch of the roof comes down, and so they actually constructed in two pieces. And then they'll bring it in, deliver it to site. Public Works would then. In the meantime, be doing the the design and. Construction of the utilities and the foundation, and then they'll actually seam it together and tile over. On site, but the fabrication from the company, Public Restroom Company, last estimated was nine to ten months. So we would want to get that order as soon as we get the approval, which would put them, you know, placing it in town park roughly around March of next year. And like I said, in the meantime, this summer, Public Works would kind of get everything else prepped and ready.
And RJ, I was at one of the community outreach meetings with you. And I remember you were kind of debating, you were kind of. Thinking that this this particular spot might be one of the more expensive spots because of the fall. You might not get the fall in the sewer. Did you guys ever figure out if you were going to be able to use gravity or you're going to have to use? Some mechanical system for it?
Yeah, we will have to do an ejector system for the sewer. But there were only a couple sites that could go gravity. And even there's also a cost savings, I guess, when. Having less piping, right? So if you were to put it, for instance, in the. The middle of the east field or, you know, the outfield of the softball, you'd. Still be paying that additional cost for that additional trenching and and pipelines. So we still think. It's within a reasonable range. We have roughly about a hundred and ten thousand dollars set aside for utility. And foundation work.
And and I know you guys are working on the master plan, but I I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, we we have on the docket to try to get one. By the playground and then remodel the existing. Is is that sort of the dream plan?
Yeah, I can share my thoughts unless. Someone else wants to jump in there, but yeah, I think that's that's definitely what I heard from, you know, Ashley, our former planning director as she was. Kind of wrapping up, you know, for her, you know, more intimate discussions with. Parks and Rest Commission and and the master plan that, you know, three is the ultimate goal and. You know, I think there's there's some. Certainly some arguments to. For instance, put another one in the playground area ahead of. You know, whether to remodel or or reconstruction of the one at the tennis court, just because. The current condition is porta potties. So I think that's generally where we're headed. But I don't think we have a specific schedule. I think that still needs to be ironed out through the master plan process.
Yeah, I think our dream plan is to make this copy two more times. When the master plan is finished, we're halfway through it right now and phase one and two completed about to phase three and four. But to get a design that we could plop two more times to put some more restrooms in the park.
So maybe not remodel that other one because it would be too cost prohibitive or.
Yeah, it's in rough shape.
Is there any plans to move any of those? The reason I'm asking is because we're talking about a location. Like the baseball field is going to stay where it is, all the fields and the dock, like. Since we don't have a diagram of actually what the specific plan is of the. Or you want to call the master plan of the actual town park. Just wanted to make sure that none of the. Facilities will be changing.
Now, there is right now the master plan, no discussion of moving facilities around. It's basically the current status of the condition of facilities. But they would all stay where they are. There's no movement of a tennis court to their side or a dog park outside. It's going to stay where it is.
The only other question I had is, are we going to integrate some kind of solar or anything? In in this, in these. For kind of self-sustained with a battery, I mean, they're used during the day. A good. Opportunity.
You know, it's it's not currently part of the design. I guess it wouldn't be included in the future. But. You know, and and we could certainly give that some thought before it goes to council, but. It's it's already a little eye opening on on costs. I think you think of a restroom and even when I talk to. You know, my colleagues that when I showed them the cost, it's 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 pretty hefty. I mean, I think all in with design, construction. Contingency, you know, we're probably looking at. Around seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
And it was more, it was it was less expensive to go with a prefabricated. Or.
Yeah, we we believe so for the for this location and facility, yeah.
Oh, my question.
We we did some research on that earlier on and. Yeah, we were we were against some similar costs.
In similar costs?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask a couple of questions here. So the location was based on finding a central place and one that sort of addressed all the needs of the park. Is that fair to say? To get it over there by the middle of the town park? Is that how you arrived at that? And this is about how many square feet? Because this little.
RJ has that.
Yeah, give me one second. It's roughly five hundred and twenty-five square feet.
Right, okay. And the nine to tenth, nine to ten month procurement time is just based on the fabricator's timeline and ability to get it in the queue. Is that essentially what you're up against?
Yeah, that's what we've heard from Public Rescue Company by nine to ten months.
Alright. Is there, are there going to be story polls for the council or are they just going to approve it from the documents?
The current plan wasn't to do story polls. You know, I think we've, yeah, we've done the display boards and, you know, it's got the elevations listed. So. Thus far, I think we've heard a lot of positive feedback, so. Currently, that wasn't the plan.
I think it's, what is it, a twelve and a half foot height at the peak? Approximately, I think it's on.
Yeah, about twelve feet in height. So it's. It's a pretty modest structure from a that perspective. So I thought, I think we thought that the. Marking the corners and the location was more important at this point. Or with the renderings, obviously on the site, we're we're give a good. Indication of what it would look like.
And this is wood frame construction, correct? It's not tilt up concrete. It's wood frame for all of this.
No, it's it's actually, the walls are actually CMU units and then they. Will put. It's mostly party siding. Lap siding. On the X, kind of like over the CMU units. As well as kind of like a stone wings coat veneer.
Just out of curiosity, what is the prefab portion of it then? Is it the roof or assembly or what? Because the CMU is going to be site built, right?
No, they're actually gonna build it offsite and I don't have all the specifics of perhaps they. I don't know if they. Dry set the blocks and pour it once they get here or if they use some sort of. Lightweight cellular concrete. I actually, it's a good question. I have to. And find that answer just from my own curiosity, but they they will have it all. Built prior. What they told us is when they come, they will. And I'll leave a little gap in the tile where the seam is and they'll do that portion at the end and then they'll also connect the utilities, but. You know, my understanding is about ninety percent of it is constructed before it comes.
Well, okay. And to Jim's question, did anybody consider sky, you know, skylights in the roof for lighting in the daytime or anything? It's all interior electrical lighting on the interior now.
You know, that that. There was comments about, I think, getting some quality venting, which I think you can see from the front. And perhaps there's a little bit of light that might come through on that within kind of the trust portion, but. Yeah, otherwise we didn't. Get a whole lot of comments or push for skylights.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll open it up for public comment unless you guys have some other questions for staff at this point. No, okay. So that's what we'll do. We'll open it up to those in the room first, if anybody wants to step up and express their opinion. Oh, come on. Okay. All right. Loretta, do you have anybody online?
We do not have any hands raised and we have no email public comment either.
It's a public comment, right? Would staff like to contribute? Okay, I'll just say this in public comment section here is that, having watched the Park and Rec hearing and. Listen to it, there was a lot of input into this, so. Probably some of that was you guys. Creating some public input. So with that said. Gosh. We're going to have to deliberate this unless somebody else comes up with some questions or comments. So, all right, then we'll close the public. Comment section of this. And we'll bring it back here to the small dais here tonight. Talk about. So.
Small dais, the big one.
That's my big personality.
Right, so. You know, it's it's been a heck of a process for staff and the community, but here we are reviewing this and talking about it. So Margaret, what are you thinking?
I think it's a great addition and I think it will be. Well-used and I hope well-maintained and. I think that the resolution is missing a public thanks. To the basically. Volunteer effort by the architect that helped. And I think he ought to be commended for stepping up and helping out with this project, which I think. Everyone will find to be a real asset. I can make all the findings.
What findings?
Yeah, well.
There aren't any, so.
Oh, well.
We're we're just here to say it looks good. So.
There's a resolution, but but I haven't picked the findings.
Jim, your thoughts about this?
I've got mixed thoughts, some concerns. Worried a little bit about it being kind of a big focal point coming into that. That view, use that park a lot during soccer season. When when my daughter was super young, all the kids used to come off and want to make sure it's not going to block the view in the sun. Of the park for security reasons as well. Definitely think that that part of the park needs needs a. Needs a bathroom. There's no doubt. And I don't know who needs it more, the playground, because I've changed diapers in that playground too. So I, you know, they they all, we could use three new ones. But I am concerned a little bit about it being like right there. And like the first thing that you see is is the bathroom. But this is what the community wants, if that's the location that they want. I was kind of thinking in the back of the community center would have been nice. Twenty feet. Wouldn't have to use an injector, but. On the design, I feel like it's a tiny bit too heavy with the tresses and I. I probably would have gone with a stucco where the stone is just to lighten up a little bit. Kind of. Bring that transitional look that we brought to the new town hall, which looks great. So. Aesthetically, those are my two comments and. Just a little concerned about the safety in a in a. Location and the focal point into the park because it's such a beautiful view driving in. I know a lot of people when they're waiting for their children or. Are finishing up their work and then the kids come out and they're not even paying attention and the kid's kind of rolling in in that direction, so. Those would be my concerns and comments on this.
Right, okay. And I tend to agree with you. I I like the openness of the park there as you drive into it. And you walk up and you just see this expanse of greenery. You look around the park. I thought having the restroom as sort of a focal point. Is kind of a bit of a loss there. And I thought it would be great if it could move over to where Jim talks about behind the community center. It does strike me that it's a very useful spot, but that it's not a great aesthetic spot. I think that. It it is better than park service. Restroom design, you know, it. Has a little bit more architecture to the roof, but. Nonetheless, you know, budget is always a thing. You're but a million dollar bathroom in San Francisco. Here we've got a million dollar bathroom going in Port of Madera, basically. So. It's a little less, but. Yeah, so. I think that. It's tough. If you if you change the architecture, you change those materials and you increase the cost these days with that kind of thing, it just becomes a bigger. Animal to chew on with more elements and consideration and all of that stuff. So if you've got a company that will. Put this up. And get it all to operate in a bulletproof manner. And I think that's the. Key issue is durability to this thing and functionality and maintenance are the keys to public restrooms, right? Otherwise, they fail. They're terrible projects. So. This has all those good elements of durability, I think. I do wish that I I like skylights in. Restrooms, walk in, you don't have to turn a light on. Nice to have that. Wish that would be a consideration for the bathroom to have. So that you didn't have LED lights with. Four or five thousand Kelvin temperature lights inside and. Sort of rude, but. Nice to have that. Yeah, hopefully it would be installed next spring, given the timeline. I think it's about time. It's great. I'm glad to see that Park and Rec has gotten this to this point. It's ready to go. But those are my comments about it. You know, I think that. Given the amount of effort, the time it's gone into it, the considerations, in spite of my comments, I would. Attach a yay and I to the resolution.
And and just if I may, the commission's welcome to also as. They may see fit, if if in fact the commission would like to move this forward. With a recommendation to approve, certainly the commission can also pass along as part of its. Resolution or. As part of its motion to include comments as well, that could be forwarded to the town council for its decision-making. And so I would just offer that to the commission if it wants to formally pass along comments as part of any motion that it makes tonight to approve a resolution. I should say that also the resolution for you tonight. I think the way it's written right now, it says recommendation by the planning commission to the town of Cora Bidera Town Council to. Recommendation by the planning commission to the town of Cora Badera Town Council to review and accept the town project report. Um, I think it's, you should probably also say, I I mean, the intent was that the commission makes a recommendation to. Approve the project, then you can make whatever with additional recommendations or comments it sees fit.
Thank you, that's all, yeah.
Can I address one of the kind of primary comments? Um, thank you Chair Chase. Um, so. Obviously, you know, looking at the location with respect to town park, you can see it's central and um one of the comments that we heard through the outreach was. A lot of um families that were there maybe with. Multiple children, one playing soccer and one needs to go to the bathroom, having that visibility to where they can. See their child use the restroom and come back, that kind of drove that central location. Um, and I do hear. Um, your comment about, you know, that. You know, taking up too much, um. You know, blocking that view as you come in, um the location, we did slide it slightly. West, so it wasn't the absolute most focal thing, um but nonetheless still um a valid point, so.
Okay, now.
RJ, are we, is it baked that we're gonna use a prefab? Um, is it, are you still gonna bid it out as as a perhaps a?
So so this company is part of um. What we call a cooperative, where they've already satisfied public contracting code by having their pricing competitively um. It's gone through a competitive process already. So they can't just raise rates and take advantage of a public agency because their. Their pricing is locked in, um in some way their margins are are locked in, so. Um, we don't plan to bid this, we would just um or and it would show up in nine to ten months.
And I would also say that was reviewed um by at the Park and Rec Commission meeting, I think it was the October. Might have been the October meeting of last year in terms of actually going with the prefab product. For some other uh facility.
I mean, it I just bring that up because there's the other whole other part of sustainability when you're using local labor and local materials. And we're we're wheeling this thing across the whole state. Doesn't seem very sustain uh very green or sustainable practice to do that. Um, with for the amount of money it is and it just seems like a lot of money to me, at two thousand dollars a foot. Or something twelve hundred, twelve fifteen hundred a foot.
Yeah. I did forget to ask uh Steph about the uh. Baseline. Owning fixture specifications. Inside of uh Cal Green baselines, uh it's one point six gallons uh for toilets, point five. For public restroom lap faucets and one point oh GPM for urinal. Um, where do the fixtures land inside of these? Um, standards, are there standards for the fixtures in the bathroom?
Yeah, it will all comply with our. Calgary requirements that we have here in town of Port of Madera.
Okay. Alright. So my only other comment to attach to this would be that. They find a way to stick some light, natural light in this, the roof of this thing. Anybody else have any other comment?
I I I just have a question because. I I didn't think about the location at first, I didn't think that was part of. Deal, but um. Now I'm kind of wondering. Did you ever consider that site behind the the rec uh building? Was that ever considered?
Yeah, there's a roadmap that showed all the dots um of the locations and that was one of the locations considered, yeah.
But why was it thrown out?
RJ, uh you guys can talk about the uh uh election process other than the accessibility, so. The the one behind uh the community center was rejected because.
Yeah, I'm trying to. Recall off the top of my head, um. You you know, I think. There there were definitely folks that even wanted it further closer to Neil Cummins. Um, and so this was in some ways for them a compromise, um. And again, I think I just kept hearing this this idea of. You know, parents with a child, watching their kid use a restroom by themselves and wanting it, you know, within closer distance, um. So those are kind of the the drivers on that. Um, we did do a sticker exercise in the community workshop and. And James was there, um Jim was there and, you know, there were definitely more stickers in this central location. Um, I I don't know if there was any sort of fatal flaw. With the the one right behind the community center, other than it might limit some of the opportunities if we ever were to. Um, renovate or do something with the community center, potentially you could have a room there that. Had a view and opened up to town park, so that was um something I heard along the way.
And I think we brought all the sites to the commission and that was the permission commission's requirement request that was this is the site they liked the best after he from the input from the staff. And for the public, they they liked that site the best. I would just say, you know, generally that's. The Park and Rec Commission is going to be evaluating sort of citing of location of structures within town park. You know, this is really more of a discussion about what design review in the sense of where. It's not a natural design review. Hearing, because it's the, as Phil mentioned, it's the town part project report process. But the same sort of evaluation of um the materials, the design, the. I'm not saying these value, these comments aren't important and valid, but I also think it's it's sort of a. Uh collaborative effort here amongst different commissions and committees, so I just wanna respect that commission's.
Thank you.
Um, decision in that regard, I mean, the the Park and Rec Commission's decision.
Okay, um. But with that said, um I I appreciate that and um that the the work has been done to get to that location. Um, and I. This is a side comment, uh I go to so many uh parks and I always pay attention to how people. Interact with restroom facilities just because it's an important part of the experience. And you see how families come to that park and they're gonna wanna walk right up to the restroom or get to the restroom and then get in their car and go, it's just the nature of the beast. It makes sense for families to function that way, I get it. Does. Um, anything else that we wanna attach to this?
Well, I was just gonna ask if if I could, it's not necessarily a recommendation, but a consideration to, you know, for the stucco rather than stone and a lighter trust system, but. Rest of the world might not agree with me, but I'd like to put it on record.
Okay, so you've got.
Skylights stucco rather than stone, I lighter truss.
So those would be um thoughts and comments to attach to the resolution, that we would do that, right? That's what we're talking about, so.
And just just a question in terms, since you have four rooms, who you envision for skylights?
Good question, um I would, yes.
It's a great idea.
So for for skylights, lighter lighter weight truss material. And stucco instead of.
Yeah, it could even be less less uh cords, I mean honestly, it just could remove the middle cords and it would probably read better to me, it just just seems super heavy, but. You know, it feels more like something up in Tahoe than it does down in Port of Madera to me, but. My my aesthetic, and then the third thing would be just to maybe consider stucco rather than the stone. Stone could be a cleaning, like they got crevices and all sorts of stuff in there, I could see that could be in the cleaning. Maybe the stucco might. Be a bit easier to clean and easier to pair and so forth.
Okay, so those are three elements I would agree with putting on the um discussion for the council.
It's just a discussion.
Right, okay, so that said, um. We have the opportunity to make a motion to uh approve resolution number twenty-three dash zero zero nine. Anyone wanna make that with those uh uh considerations for council?
And I would just note the revised um motion, if you may, just not to recommend that the council review and. Accept the town project report, but also to essentially approve the project.
But not to accept the town report, but to approve the project. Or both.
You could do both, but yeah, and then with whatever other items you'd like to attach to it. Which I think we've heard that obviously there's the skylights um and allow natural light into the. Each individual room, and then there was this, the. Last heavier um.
Material.
Material in the chalice, and then there seems to be some maybe not unanimous support, but for the stone versus stucco. Um, so.
I'm on the stucco side, Margaret's on the stone side.
Okay.
Right, okay. Um, that said.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion in the matter of. Recommendation by the planning commission to the town of Cora Madera Town Council to review and accept the town project report. And approve the town project described in a proposed town. Park restroom facility uh with some considerations uh to adding four skylights. Possibly changing the the lower portion of stone to stucco or a lighter material that can be cleaned. And maybe lighting up the truss or removing some of the cords. Uh, this is resolution number twenty-three dash zero zero nine.
This is Margaret, would you care a second there?
Second.
Okay.
Commissioner Bandell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Yes.
Chair Chase?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyshoyer is absent and Commissioner Kenny absent, motion carries.
Alright. Thank you. Alright, so we're we're down to uh. Getting to the last item on the agenda tonight, which was a review for four hundred Oakdale Avenue. And as I understand it, the applicant has asked to move that to April uh twenty seventh.
I believe it's twenty fifth.
Well, that's a good point, we'll turn over to the attorney over here and ask her, um. But she might.
Um, Mr. Chase, the Brown Act does not require public comment except prior to taking an action, which will not be taken tonight. However, I certainly believe the chair would have discretion to open up the matter for public comment. And then close it again and have those comments be part of the record of the project, it's I would give, I believe you would have that discretion.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarity. Um, in in the interest of that and hearing what you have to say. I would open this to public comment.
And if I may, I would just. Keep the hearing to specifically just listening to the public comment, given that there's no applicant interruption.
Okay, so please. So please, uh if you would like to make a comment, then uh please step up and uh. You have uh three minutes uh to make a comment, uh we'd be interested to have that for the record. Uh.
When was this decision to move it to later in April, May?
Perhaps Chairman, I'm sorry, but perhaps Chairman Chase, as a staff member of this project, so this project is. Um, four hundred Oakdale Avenue, a preliminary review uh to review the project for a new home. Um, at four hundred um Oakdale Avenue and the applicant um. This afternoon contacted me and said they have decided not, they wanted this to be postponed. Um, from two weeks from today because a key member of of the owner was not able to participate at this time. So they asked that this be continued and they sent me a um an email of that fact.
There was no way to notify anybody else? Except you and the applicant?
Um, I I notified uh the planning commission, the applicant and the individual who sent us the letter.
And not the neighbors.
Correct, I did not notify the neighbors, there was not.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And again, they they specifically asked for um it to be continued at that particular meeting, so therefore we will not be noticing this again. For the particular meeting, it will take place on April twenty-fifth, if unless anything changes.
Okay. Um. Please uh step up and uh say.
Yeah, I think we just had some questions because we haven't seen story polls go up yet, and so I'm I'm Hannah Richards, I'm at four oh eight Oakdale. Um, two houses up and are the home that's directly next to the house that is. The proposed to be um demolished and and a new home put in that place, um. We we haven't seen any story polls, so we we were concerned with, you know, what the timing would be. And that's one of the reasons I wanted to come tonight, because we haven't had a great deal of communication, we've seen a three D. Video sent to us, um and certainly would like to understand more about what the what the project would look like overall and. Have some concerns about it being within the um within the look and feel of the neighborhood, certainly.
Staff can address that uh momentarily, I think, uh anyone else wanna say anything?
Good evening. I'm Dana Dean and uh I sent you a letter this afternoon, I represent the people who own um. Four oh four Oakdale, which is directly adjacent to the property, the gauges. They've owned the property for several decades and um. I, um when I was coming in, I heard a couple of comments about how they didn't get noticed, but they didn't. Um, they they lived in the property for many, many years, currently are residing out of state for a short time, so. I believe the tenants got notice and the tenants have been contacted by the developer, but. Uh, my clients have not heard from the de- developer since for a very long time, since they purchased the property, and it is correct that. Our property sort of wraps around the project, the property that would be developed. Um, I I was pretty specific on a lot of different items and I'll I'll step back also and say that typically. We try very hard to get comment letters into the decision making body around the time you get the staff report, but we didn't even know this existed. Until Thursday, so um hopefully when you see me again, you will have had an opportunity to review everything that I had to say. Um, I'll just point out that there are some very distinct general plan and municipal code issues. Involved with really the the size of the project as much as anything, the size. Affects so many different parts of how you evaluate a project, and in particular in this city, in this town, excuse me. Um, how that very large structure, replacing the tiny structure, the very large structure. Imposes on its neighbors in terms of view of the certainly view of Mount Tam, most especially. Um, secondly, light, sound, it's a big deal. It's a big deal for the whole neighborhood, but it's a particularly big deal for my client's house, and also another question I heard was this. Our, this house, um the gauges house was built in. The early part of the twentieth century, nineteen oh eight, I believe, was when it was completed, it was built so it faces. Mount Tam. So it's actually, it is correct that the front of the house. Does not face the street. And so what what is gonna be in front of it now is this giant three thousand square foot. Project, if if it does in fact go forward, so um we've, I I'm imagining that the applicant has in fact seen my letter. We definitely want to have conversations with everyone involved about how to address the. The very, very significant imposition that this project would create if it went forward. the very, very significant imposition that this project would create if it went forward. Sorry, is that my time? Is that my time? All right. Well, thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions. I look forward to working with you and
Thank you.
As we go forward.
All right. Anyone else want to jump up there? No. Okay. So I'm going to ask Phil to address the differences between a study session and
If I may, we do have a hand raised from Eli Gage.
Okay.
On Zoom. I'll go ahead and move them over. Eli, you should be able to speak.
Yes, thank you, guys. I I I wanted to apologize for not being there in person. Thank you, Dana, for representing me quite well. Um, I'm in Florida now, living, taking care of some ill in-laws. But this project, this home is very important to me. And I appreciate the work you guys do and I I would kind of chime in and say this transparency of not being contacted is a problem. I did get the planning notice at my address and currently in Florida. And I'd like to be, you know, I'd like to stay abreast of this as it goes forward. So again, thank you guys for the work that you do.
All right. Thank you.
We don't have any additional public comment.
Okay. That said, then we can close this public comment and I can ask Mr. Boyle to comment on process for what we were going to do tonight and when this becomes a formal application that does get story polls and all of that.
Yes, that is correct. This is a preliminary review or study session. So it is noticed. All property owners and tenants are noticed within three hundred feet of the the project. And I'm glad to hear that the property owner received a notice in his location and and also the tenants received the notice. At that this preliminary review does not require story polls. A preliminary review is more or less a discussion between the applicant, the neighbors and the commission to get initial feedback on the design. Following the preliminary review or sometimes more than one preliminary review. If the applicant moves forward, then the applicant is required to install story polls. Those need to be installed to minimum of two weeks prior to the public hearing and they need to be certified. At that point, you will also, the neighbors, everyone within three hundred feet will also receive another notice for that formal hearing. And that's when the planning commission will deliberate and either make a decision or continue that. There's there's main difference between a preliminary review, which this was in a schedule to be compared to a formal review.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Yeah, and just in that regard, I just think the we've instituted a preliminary review as a voluntary measure for applicants to take advantage of early in the process to really get some feedback, as as Phil mentioned, initial feedback on projects. And so it's been successful and sort of at least starting a conversation perhaps. Obviously, sometimes we, it happens even before a preliminary review application. But I think hopefully, this is sort of seen as the beginning of those efforts. And that there's plenty of discussion and conversation to be had moving forward.
All right. Thank you. So here we are. We're lonely in this room tonight, but thank you guys for calling up. And sorry that it just, it didn't get out. It was sudden. I was surprised and I don't think the town has a way of contacting neighbors in sort of an emergency or a quick situation like this.
Either, either as a suggestion. At the beginning, maybe after the pledge of allegiance, before we start, we ought to say something like, have there been any changes to the agenda? And that way people wouldn't have to wait.
Are you all right?
For two hours. So maybe we ought to address any changes at first.
Point. I should have brought that up. Yes. So. Anyway.
Frustrating to wait.
I'm glad to hear the input tonight and that I think that'll probably get passed on.
So I will inform the applicant that they can watch this. And and certainly any members of the public, if you want to contact me, I can give you my contact information.
I hope you'll all come back.
April twenty-fifth. Preliminary hearing. All right. Thank you. Okay. So with that said, we'll see if commissioners have any reports for us tonight.
Margaret, were you at the window for me?
Yeah, I haven't looked at my notes for a long time. Let's see, it was the the meeting of the town council on March twenty-first. And the first thing that was discussed, which was pretty interesting, was modifications to the Zins Parklet. Which is the area outside of that of the wine store. Which is now, they're calling it a parklet. I've never heard that term. But what they were asking was to, or considering was to extend the temporary permit with the possibility of figuring out perhaps um, to make it a permanent situation. They did approve the extension of the temporary permit. Which they, which was explained that it's essentially an encroach, an encroachment permit. And they're monitoring it for feedback with an eye to modification and consideration of a more permanent situation right there. They did say they were gonna limit the space of it. So it didn't go quite so far past the the frontage part of that that business. And then there were comments about approving the housing element annual progress report. And the thing that I did actually note in the IJ and was brought up there that Corder Madera has exceeded the targets for all income levels. And that was largely because of the ADUs and also the Casa Buena project. So, and that was in the IJ also. Um, and then they also, there was a discussion about the salary schedule for the senior civil engineer. And and how to try to, and building official and how to try to uh, get good candidates in on the recruitment process, perhaps. There were different suggestions made on how to get better recruitment going on.
Okay. So is the parklet discussion something still occurring? I just hear it's it's over with or? I don't know if we.
Well, they approved the temporary.
Temporary.
Permanent, yeah.
There will be additional discussions on the permanent regulations.
Got it. All right. That's I noticed they reduced their size, yes.
There was, I didn't realize they also have music on the weekends and they talked about the request for allowing live music three to four times a month. Friday or Saturday for a few hours. And there was some discussion about whether the neighborhood would oppose that or not. In the way such a situation.
Okay. Good report. That's good to know. I didn't know all that. Wanted to know about that. All right. Jim, you had some.
I've got some bullet points here. I was at the four four meeting. And we had a presentation from Christine O'Rourke, Sustainability Coordinator from Marine County Climate and Energy Partnership. And representing on the Marine Countywide Electric Vehicle Acceleration Strategy. And some of the main bullet points were, they're trying to align and support local climate action plans. Uh, consistent plans across all the jurisdictions would be great. Coordinate available grants, some of the big things. Talk a little bit about equity and lower income and how we can rule them into the plan. Um, and those initiatives. Um, and then some of the outreach plans and trying to get all the troops together so that we can have a larger voice in getting this moved forward. So on the business items. We had a, an assessment of some of the, some of the facilities townwide, some of the inventory and assessments for the buildings for Parks and Rec and some of the buildings. Current conditions were looked at, facilities and amenities. Recreation provided provided constraints, opportunities and code compliance. Um, and they use this kind of really cool weighted program. I don't know if you've ever done that in work where they where they kind of weigh the different items and that's how they come up with what's more important. So it's it's worth a view if you're interested in how they, how we come up with how we're going to put our programs together to see what we want, we can spend our money on what's most important to the community and and to the to the staff and everybody. And then and then there was a discussion of the possibility of the acceptance of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four climate action work plan recommendation. Um, talked a lot about stretch codes, EV charging, climate outreach strategy, zero waste and electrification strategies. Um, and it was accepted and passed. And then the mayor appointed two delegates, A-BAG and Rosa stepped up. And Mr. Casissa tooks, took the
The back. Okay. So that was a re, sort of rejoining A-BAG, is that what's going on?
Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't mention that. We're not rejoining. We're we're engaging.
It's like a subcommittee of the Marine County City Managers, I'm sorry, City Council members and that they want to A-BAG is requesting um, feedback on the Reno process from county. And council members. So there's a subcommittee forum to basically work on that. Pat Eklund, who is actually the MCC MC delegate to A-BAG, so from from Marine County.
That's it for me.
Okay. Then I will turn over and look at the planning staff and ask what they have to say.
I'll just share that the council at their next meeting will be having a discussion on short-term rentals to provide direction to to staff on options of developing an ordinance to allow them or to to not allow them. There'll be a very similar presentation to the one the commission had back in October by Bob Brown.
That's this Tuesday?
This Tuesday. Yes. And we did, we're trying to notice it as far and wide to get individuals to participate in the discussion and provide provide feedback.
Okay, so that's a very small report from planning staff. But okay. With that said, I didn't even look. I thought it was so ungrossed. We don't have any, do we have notes to approve at all? Then it's March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. This was the we got the hearing that's channel of a short-term rental problem. And town center. So do we have any motion to approve these notes?
Make a motion to approve the notes.
Okay. Second.
Everybody, hi.
Hi.
Okay, we approved the notes. So with that said, nothing else. Let's adjourn this meeting.